In nineteen thirteen. And since then, the sorority has championed voter registration, voter information, and voter rights. Our chapter provides an extensive array of public service initiatives in the northwest suburban area through our five-point programmatic thrust, which includes educational development, economic development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, as well as political awareness and involvement. We are so happy to partner with the League of Women Voters in hosting this forum today. The League's purpose is to promote responsibility through the informed and active participation of all citizens. Providing this forum enables members of the community to become better informed about the issues facing the community and candidates running for office, and they are pleased to offer this service to you. During today's presentation, all members of the audience will be muted. It is suggested that you put your screens in the ballot gallery view mode. We will not be using the chat or hand raise functions. All questions for the candidates were submitted at the time of the audience registration or from local and nonpartisan organizations. Both the moderator, as well as the timer, have been trained by the League of Women Voters. I am pleased to introduce our moderator for today's forum, Chantel Porter. Ms. Porter is a partner with H. Rob and Associates, practicing all areas of family law. She has served on the Board of Governors for the Illinois State Bar Association and is an active member of the DuPage County Bar Association. Ms. Porter is also a past president of the DuPage Association of Women Lawyers. In addition, she is a member of the Schaumburg Hoffman Estates Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Ms. Porter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Cross. Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to be with you this afternoon to moderate this candidate forum. Let me take a few minutes to explain the format and the rules for the forum. All of the candidates were contacted by mail, email, and phone, and have agreed to abide by the ground rules provided by the League of Women Voters. They are as follows. Candidates have drawn numbers to determine speaking order, and I will rotate that order during the forum for questions. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. Next, each candidate will have one minute to answer questions. I may repeat the question if necessary. If needed and at my discretion, a rebuttal may be requested. Each candidate may use a maximum of two rebuttals, and rebuttals will be timed and limited to thirty seconds each. At the end, each candidate will have one minute for a closing argument. Candidates will be given a thirty-second and fifteen-second warning, so please quickly complete your thoughts before you see the stop card. Time limits will be enforced out of respect for all candidates. As stated, questions were submitted by audience members at the time of registration. Each question will be answered by all of the candidates. Today's forum will be taped for the League of Women Voters' use in educating the public, and a video of this forum will be available early next week on the League of Women Voters of Palatine area and the Schaumburg Hoffman Estates Alumni Chapters websites. The candidates have all consented to that republication. No voice, image, or other duplication of the forum may be used by a candidate's representative or campaign in any campaign advertising. Delta Sigma Theta and the League of Women Voters claims copyright ownership of all recordings or transcripts produced from this event and reserve the right to publicize this forum. Today, we will hear from candidates hoping to represent the Township District Two-Eleven School Board. We have nine candidates vying for three seats. I will introduce these candidates as they come on the screen. We will wait for all the candidates to join us, and then we will begin with opening statements. The candidates are Curtis Bradley, Jessica J. Hinkle, Anna Klimkowitz, Timothy McGowan, Amy K. Nelson, Kristin M. Steele, Robbie Volkmar, and Denise K. Wilson. Roxanne Whitcamp will also be on the ballot, but she has declined to participate in this forum. I believe I have all candidates on the panel, so we can begin. We will start with opening statements, and the first opening statement will go to Robbie Volkmar.
Thank you for having me today and for hosting this forum. I just wanted to point out that I am taking notes, so if I look away, it's not because I'm not paying attention. My name is Robbie Volkmar, and I grew up in Hannover Park, and I am a Hoffman Estates High School alum. I hold a bachelor's degree in sociology and a minor in Japanese from Illinois State University. After graduating college, I spent two years living and studying in Japan. I have resided in Schaumburg for the past fifteen years, along with my husband and three children, who have gone through District Fifty-four and District Two-Eleven. Since two thousand and thirteen, I have worked as a bilingual recruiter at a Japanese staffing agency in Schaumburg. I continue to hold many volunteer positions throughout the community and hope to add board member to my list. My commitment to volunteering and fostering positive change has included being a commissioner of the Village of Schaumburg Sister Cities and being part of the Welcome Committee for diplomats and students from Japan and Germany. I also led two trips to Japan with local students via my nonprofit organization that I started back in two thousand and eight, Schaumburg Oyanokai. Schaumburg Oyanokai also sponsors an annual Japanese culture night at Dooley Elementary School in Schaumburg, home to the Japanese Dual Language Program. This largely attended community event allows for Japanese cultural learning beyond the classroom. This event has grown over the years and has continued, and has included attendees like the mayor of Schaumburg, the Japanese Consulate General, and District Fifty-four and District Two-Eleven Administration and Board members. Anna has attended as well. I also worked successfully with D-Two-Eleven Administration to offer Japanese language classes for students at all five high schools after seeing a need for students to have a continuum of their Japanese language students and studies in high school. Some of my current volunteer commitments are co-president of the Schaumburg High School Booster Club, director of Schaumburg Oyanokai, and a Village of Schaumburg Sister City Commissioner. I am hoping I can continue to advocate for students and families as a District Two-Eleven Board Member.
We will now have Kristin Steele.
Good afternoon. Thank you to the League of Women's Voters for hosting this forum. I'm Kristin Steele, and I'm excited to be running for the Board of Education. As a parent of three children who attend D-Fifty-four, D-Two-Eleven, and St. Peter's, education and academics is a top priority for me and my family. My parents were both educators, coaches, and administrators. They instilled in us the value of a good education, hard work, and perseverance. I have worked for Fortune 500 food companies, created and executed million-dollar budgets, and have spoken often in front of hundreds, and now do this as a consultant. I have served as an active member of D-Fifty-four PTA, Secretary for Homeowners Association, and have become a strong advocate for our children in getting back to school and play since the pandemic. I have attended board meetings, budget and finance meetings, spoken during public comments, and have done my due diligence in being fully invested in the change that is needed for this school board and to allow me to be prepared to make a meaningful contribution as a member of the D-Two-Eleven School Board. Being an effective board member requires collaboration and critical thinking skills to help ensure our resources are invested in our students and that our tax dollars are effectively and efficiently used. One of the most important skill sets I possess is my ability to listen, consider all information presented, and develop an action plan. It is why I am hired as a consultant for Fortune 500 companies. Over the past year, I have learned their administration lacks transparency towards our current board as well as the community. I have learned that the current school board is okay with voting unanimously to give up their responsibility to the students and allow an administration to make decisions without voter consult. I have learned that the current board is okay with the status quo and does not dive in to ask hard questions that may make more work or time for the administration. I have learned that the majority of the board wants to continue to take money from our taxpayers, even though we are debt-free, have eight percent unemployment rate, and millions of dollars in cumulative reserves. I have learned that the current board must not know how precise-
Thank you, Ms. Steele. We will now have Denise Wilson.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Denise Wilson. I'm running for District Two-Eleven School Board, as I think we can do better than status quo. Per the National Education Association for the years twenty eighteen through twenty nineteen, Illinois taxpayers paid teachers the highest average salaries of Midwestern and neighboring states. And District Two-Eleven schools are not even rated in the top ten schools for Illinois. U.S. News rated from high school as number nineteen, with only fifty-seven-point-two percent students leaving college ready. All other District Two-Eleven schools rated less than fifty percent college-ready. Keep in mind, this was before the last year of remote learning, which for most has not been successful. We can and we must do better. District Two-Eleven has a favorable budget variance of twelve million dollars and a land sale of seventeen million. Why are our taxes going up with this much in the budget? Our state has lost thousands of jobs. Small businesses are struggling. The last thing we need is a tax increase. I moved to Hoffman Estates in nineteen eighty-four, working for AT&T. My daughter attended both District Fifty-four and Two-Eleven. I continue to believe that having a good educational system is something every citizen should support. For many years, I've been volunteering for Hoffman Estates Village and Park District. I'm on the Lutheran Day Early Childhood Center Board and previously volunteered for the Midwest Center Against Sexual Assault. These positions have given me an opportunity to hear concerns and facilitate change. As a board member, I will work to provide better education, cut wasteful spending, and work to improve our education and communications for all District Two-Eleven students. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. We will next have Timothy McGowan.
Perfect. Hi, everyone. I'm Tim McGowan. You might not recognize me without a megaphone in my hand, but if you have been involved with the community for the past year with Black Lives Matter in our community, then you know I'm someone who has rallied our community against injustice. I'm a father, a small business owner, a longtime Palatine resident, and a two thousand Fram graduate. I'm running for the school board because the very same issues of injustice that affect our society are affecting D-Two-Eleven students in their schools. From issues of racism to being silenced from speaking out about sexual violence, our students are struggling with issues to prevent them from achieving academic success. While I am thankful for my D-Two-Eleven education and grateful for my teachers, these are some of the same issues I heard about or directly experienced. To be frank, my time at Fram wasn't always comfortable, and when I had the opportunity to hear from students over the past summer, it became obvious that students are still experiencing these problems fifteen years later. These issues must be a top priority, but they are not unique to our district. We have had the opportunity to be leaders in the state and in our country to set a new standard for excellent education. I was asked by students, teachers, and community members from all over the district to run to represent their concerns. I am not running on a single platform issue. I am not running because I have a personal agenda. I am running for a seat on the D-Two-Eleven Board of Education on a platform of accountability, community, and equity, and to amplify student voices with your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have candidate Amy Klimkowitz. Amy, please unmute. Anna Klimkowitz, I apologize. Anna, please unmute.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Anna Klimkowitz, and I've had the privilege of serving on the District Two-Eleven Board for the past twenty-three years. It has been amazing to see how the district has grown and developed over the years. I strive to encourage the district to continue developing and learn so that we can provide a safe educational environment for our students, our staff, and our community. My background is in the human services field. For the past ten years, I have worked for a nonprofit as the Housing Program Manager, assisting individuals facing housing insecurities, food insecurities, and employment challenges. Prior to this, I worked in the General Assistance Department for Schaumburg Township for nineteen years. My passion in dealing with those in crisis led me to getting my master's in human services and becoming a licensed professional counselor. I've gravitated to working part-time as a substance abuse and gambling counselor. Listening to people and helping them work towards their goals has been extremely rewarding and something I enjoy. Everyone needs to be heard. The values that I bring are integrity, commitment, knowledge, and leadership. My involvement in the community includes the PTA, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, Schaumburg Peer Jury, and most recently, working on the Governor's Task Force for Social Emotional Learning. I also serve on various board committees and am the representative for NSSEO. My motivation to seek reelection is to safeguard our schools so that our community can continue to depend on them for the excellence far beyond a single board member or a board member's term. I'll use my experience as a board member to make sure we provide opportunities and support every family, especially because of the need that has arisen during the pandemic. I listen to all points of view and fairly consider arguments or concerns on their merits, regardless of the origin. I thank you very much, and I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. Now we have candidate Amy K. Nelson.
There we go. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to take part in this event. My name is Amy Nelson. I am a twenty-one-year resident of Palatine, along with my husband, Mike. We raised our son and daughter here. They attended Winston Campus for Elementary and Junior High, and they both graduated from Palatine High School. I work in insurance. Mike is a middle school teacher. My son works in insurance with me, and my daughter is a high school math teacher. The apples do not fall far from the tree in our house. In two thousand and sixteen, I became very interested in our local school boards when District Fifteen was considering a one-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar referendum. In two thousand and seventeen, I was selected as a finalist to interview for a vacated seat on the District Two-Eleven Board. For me, running for the school board this year is almost five years in the making. I believe I have an unusual but advantageous viewpoint with my background. I work in a business, and I have teachers in the family. And by the way, not just my immediate family. My in-laws are also all teachers or in the education field. I was recently told by someone that he thought I was in enigma, in unknown. I kind of liked that. Some might think that means unpredictable with a negative connotation, but personally, I think it's a positive. It means that I won't be, well, predictable, and I certainly will not be the proverbial rubber-stamper. If I'm elected, our community will be getting an analytical, open, honest, approachable representative who is interested in making sure that District Two-Eleven continues to maintain its excellent reputation and someone who will work hard to make it even better for future students. Thank you.
Next, we have Curtis Bradley.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event today. My name is Curtis Bradley, and I'm currently running for District Two-Eleven Board. I'm a nineteen ninety-one graduate of Conant High School. My wife is a ninety-one graduate of Schaumburg High School. We have two sons, twenty-seven and twenty-three. Our oldest son graduated from Schaumburg, and our youngest graduated from Conant. While both of them were high school athletes, Jordan, our oldest, excelled in wrestling, and our youngest excelled in football and basketball, where they both served as captains. Part of the reason I'm running is that I did most of my adulthood volunteering, whether it was with the YWMCA, whether it's with the Wings Program, whether it was with Junior Achievement, and also I did some work with the Northwest Compass with Anna. Also, I had the opportunity in two thousand and sixteen to serve on the Community Engagement Committee, where I felt that we were making some ground and changing the strategic plan of the district. However, some of that progress has been made, but I still feel that there is room to grow. And with that, I'll be using the acronym FIGHT, where I'll be fighting for the district and the kids, because I think that their education is important, and not just their education, but their career after high school. So we'll be using the acronym FIGHT and focusing on fairness, inspiring the kids, guiding them to a higher level, where high school is really important, and they should have memories in high school. And we're going to do this very tough, where we're going to be working with the community and the board as well. So thank you. And again, my name is Curtis Bradley, and I'm running for District Two-Eleven.
And we will now have Jessica Hinkle.
Hi. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting the event. I appreciate you setting this up and allowing the community to learn more about us as candidates. My name is Jessica Hinkle. I was born and raised in Hannover Park. I attended D-Fifty-four schools, then graduated from Hoffman Estates High School. I received my bachelor's of science from Eastern Illinois University, majoring in zoology and minoring in chemistry. I met my husband while we were in high school. He was a rival. He went to Conan, and we have been together for twenty-six years and married for twenty-two of them. As we started our family, we wanted our kids to have the same great experiences that we did in school, educationally, emotionally, and athletically, so we knew we wanted to be in D-Two-Eleven. We currently have a freshman at Schaumburg High School and a sixth grader at Hoover Math and Science. Both boys have been very active in many sports, but they are now focused on wrestling and golf. I have about twenty-plus years of volunteering, volunteer community involvement at various levels, from being a PTA member to a football mom to running organizations and being an active member in various league boards. Career-wise, I'm a business professional with over twenty years' experience in the quality control and quality assurance in pharmaceuticals and dietary supplement industries with focus on upholding regulatory systems and implementing operational compliance standards. In many of my roles, I have been responsible for hiring, training, mentoring new employees, as well as creating and managing multimillion-dollar budgets. I believe the success I've had in my career is due to my education, upbringing, being a hard worker, and an analytical and critical thinker. I'm seeking to serve our community, because while I do believe D-Two-Eleven has been one of the best districts in Illinois, I think that we need to do even more. We need to not be complacent and push forward by being focused on the best student experience while being fiscally responsible. And just importantly, we need to hear our students' and parents' and teachers' voices and act on them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our first question. As we are all aware, the global pandemic is a once-in-a-lifetime, a once-in-a-generation issue. And the question is this: If it not for the current pandemic, would you be running for the school board? And what are your plans for in-person learning for the two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two school year? We will start with Kristin Steele.
Had there not been a pandemic, I would be running for school board. Having three kids in the districts coming through, I have one currently and two that would be coming through, I have found it vitally eye-opening and important, as specifically taxes have continued to be raised and really starting to dig into what's happening with the district and how the district and the board is budgeting, being fiscally responsible, and spending our money. So that would probably have still happened without the pandemic. As far as back to school, it is my desire for all children to be back in person with the opportunity to be remote but not have virtual learning for those in school. I think that's very destructive and difficult, both from the teacher's standpoint as well as from the children's standpoint, and don't allow them the success that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Denise Wilson.
Yes, I would still run for the office on the school board. I've been a huge volunteer in Hoffman Estates for over twenty years, and the last two years I've been on the Park District. So yes, I would have still run for this. I think it's a very important education, as all citizens should as a taxpayer. And I'm also concerned about our taxes, as I mentioned earlier, with thirty-three-million-dollar budget in Two-Eleven, and for them to increase our taxes is a concern to me, as it should be. We have eighty, about eighty thousand homes in the district, and not all of those have children in it, but yet we're all concerned about the education that we're providing. Thank you.
Timothy McGowan.
Perfect. Thank you. Absolutely. I would be running. Most of my concerns and my motivation to run came from this past summer and a lot of the social climate that we've had this past year outside of the COVID. But as it relates to children going back to school, Dr. Pausi himself has made it very clear that vaccines won't be available until around September. They're hoping to move that date up. I think we should have a full-person learning option started in the fall, but students with medical conditions, students and teachers with medical conditions, should have the option to learn remotely for health and safety reasons. All of the students should be encouraged to go to attend in person if possible, but if we're talking about getting schools open right now, then we need to have some type of contingency plan, because only twenty-five percent of Illinois residents are vaccinated at the moment.
Thank you. Anna Klimkowitz.
Thank you. Well, yes, I would probably continue running for the school board. I think what we need to provide is the best education for our students coming in. With the pandemic, we've had to do the best that we can for them. Going forward, my hope is that we are in full person in school in the fall, and I believe that the administration will give us more information at our next board meeting in March, which is March eighteenth, and looking at having the students in school. And if there are any concerns in regards to health issues, we have to explore that also. But at this time, I'm looking at students being in school and going forward with the way we have been in the past with activities, athletics, things of that nature, given that we manage all of our health concerns.
Thank you. Amy Nelson.
So as I mentioned in my opening statement, this has been on my radar for almost five years. So yes, I would definitely be running, no matter what, with the assumption regarding getting back to school, with the assumption that the vaccine continues to be distributed and all who want to be vaccinated are vaccinated. The two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year should go back to pre-pandemic in-person learning. Obviously, if there are students with immediate medical concerns, then we would need to evaluate an alternative with the potential for an all-remote learning option. But in everything that we're hearing from President Biden, from the CDC, Departments of Public Health, vaccinations are stepping up, and I anticipate the two thousand and twenty-one school year to go back to full in-person learning.
Thank you. Curtis Bradley.
Thank you for the question. So I would say I would still be running for the school board. In fact, conversations of me running started back in two thousand and sixteen. And as far as how I would handle the schools opening for two thousand and twenty-two, I believe that students learn best in a classroom setting. This can be done safely, and our district has implemented safety measures to each school. Guidelines established by the CDC and the ISBE should be considered when making the return in-person learning decision. The fall semester showed while most students have adapted to an enormous change in education, many are struggling. I would like to see more flexibility on how to address students that find remote learning difficult. We need more support from these students in order to get the data to support their learning abilities. Thank you.
Jessica Hinkle.
Hi, yes. I started looking into our district and how it interacts with our community about three years ago, when we started talking about our sons entering into D-Two-Eleven. But with a freshman right now at Schaumburg, this did kick me into high gear with this past year's experience. I think that we need to move forward for in-person learning, of course, with the exception of those that have true medical concerns. I think this-
Uh, I think this past year's educational experience has lacked focus on mental and emotional health and social development. Um, so I believe that uh we need to place more focus on that and getting our kids back into uh back into the classroom. We should be utilizing localized uh COVID nineteen data to determine how this will be done. Um, and we should look to initiate conversations with our neighboring private schools and districts that have been in person. Since the start um and learn from their do's and don'ts. Uh, we need to set up. We need to do this um effectively and quickly so that we can get our kids back in the classroom and we should also consider, sorry.
Thank you. Next question. In a district with a wide range of economic.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I wasn't able to offer.
Oh, I apologize, Robbie Volker. I, Rebecca, I deeply apologize. Robbie Volker, please go. I apologize.
That's okay. Um, yes, uh, I definitely would still be running and had been approached uh by current board members, several current board members. To uh run um as, as much as uh five years ago. Uh, but now the timing feels right uh to do so. Um, I feel D two eleven did a poor job at exploring in-person learning options. As there were many school districts and private schools in the area and out of state. That could have been used as examples to offer in-person learning at District two eleven high schools. For example, Geneva High School has been offering in-person learning since early on in the pandemic. They even have accommodated students by offering two different teaching staffs, one solely for remote learning and one solely for in-person learning. I just think uh D two eleven could have done a lot more exploring of possibilities and options. Uh, and what would be best for the students uh D two eleven as well. Thank you.
Thank you. For our next question. In a district with a wide range of economic and ethnic backgrounds. What is the role of the school board with regards to equity and inclusion? And the first uh question, this question will go to Denise Wilson.
Um, well, I, I think that, that we have a lot of policies out there already. Uh, I think we need to get together and review. We've got a committee, I believe, on equity going on right now. Out in the school system. Um, but I would look at it from a vertical point of view and assume that students have a different um set of needs. And we need to provide those resources based on those needs. Um, we need to recognize uh what those are and um then work to solving those. Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy McGowan.
Hmm, thank you. Um, the district has in fact uh developed an equity team that only came after the community demanded one. Uh, but we need to have a sense of urgency about this. Black students only make up six percent of the student's population, but are receiving twenty-four percent of the suspensions. And thirty-eight percent of the school-related arrests. Latinx students make up twenty-five percent of the population, but receive thirty-nine percent of suspensions and thirty-five percent of the school-related arrests. We are contributing, contributing to the school, school-to-prison pipeline that sets our youth up for failure. We need to look at the ways in staff, excuse me, we need to look at the staff bias that leads to outcome. How can we be better to support it? Um, we have students in our community who are insecure, food insecure or housing insecure issues that have only gotten worse due to this pandemic. Students can't learn until their basic needs are met. The district needs to partner with nonprofits and communities, ensure students and their families uh receive the assistance they need. The district can also host family events like resume workshops or job fairs and host community outreach events with nonprofits so that families know about the resources available to them.
Thank you. Anna Klinkowitz.
Thank you. Yes, we've been, uh, the issue of diversity was brought forward and we've taken action upon it. We've asked the administration to compile feedback from the community. We have a D two eleven equity team um that started in uh the end of October and it's continuing. We have uh board members that are sitting on the, the committee, so we're getting some firsthand information there. And the committee that I sit on is the Equitable Practices and Mindset Committee. And we're focusing on the school culture, behavioral interventions, and support and employment issues. We have some wonderful students that are part of that. I think every voice needs to be heard, so it's really important. And it is being brought forward. Um, there's things that we're probably not aware of. So this is an excellent way to get the information out, to teach our staff, to work with our community. And to help and support our students and provide a safe environment. So I, I truly believe in this and it's a very positive thing to do. Thank you.
Amy Kay Nelson.
Thank you. Yes, um, so this district um has some very diverse schools, some more than others. Um, we, we need to be focusing more of our resources to the schools. That have that greatest diversity, especially those with socioeconomic challenges. Um, equity doesn't just mean racial equity, um although it's very important. Uh, but we have recently discovered, for example, that one school is receiving eighty-five hours of SAT prep time and one is receiving only five. Um, and that school that's only getting five hours is the most socio-economically challenged school. We have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Curtis Bradley.
Hello. Thank you again for the question. Uh, I would like to start by quoting um Doc, Dr. Martin Luther King from um I Have a Dream Speech. And in that, he said that I look to a day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin. But by the content of their character. And within that speech, students are struggling every day. I believe the district must be valuing equity. We must focus on the whole student to ensure that every student needs are being considered. When making decisions on the best serve that student. We all have individual needs that differ from one another. I would like to see flexibility and innovative, innovative solutions based on the whole child rather than addressing the student. Needs as a whole. Thank you.
Jessica Hinkle.
Equity in education requires putting systems in place to ensure that every child has an equal chance for success. A recent FOIA request on uh SAT preparation offerings um was kind of shocking to see the results of that. The high school with the lowest number of students on free and discounted lunches were provided the most SAT prep. Well, the vice versa was also true. I was saddened that the administration was actually aware of this and didn't take action on this until the community uh pushed for it. Rather than putting our complete focus on cultural responsive training, we need to broaden the training and put focus on evaluating the offerings at each school and focus on making changes. To our district to reduce the inequities. If I were elected, I would like to be more proactive. I would want to see, I would want to set up. A teacher-focused group to have teachers from the same departments across different district, across the district, come together. And discuss how things are being done differently and get all of the schools up to the high schools level. I also think that some of the capital projects and resources available at each school should be based on the school's.
Thank you. Robbie Volker.
Since there is an equity team, I would be interested in hearing the results of their research as it pertains to the district. I do feel that equity means different things to a lot of people and do not feel it's just a race issue. Uh, as some of my previous candidates uh already spoke to. Uh, there are other equity inequities that need to be addressed, like the inequity of academics across all five schools. Um, there is uh an inequity of class offerings where there are class offering opportunities at some high schools and not others. And also as was for uh previously mentioned, uh test preparation, time allotment. Uh, also seems to be uh inequitable at all five schools as well. And that's just to name a few. Thank you.
Kristin Steele.
Thank you. Um, as my fellow candidates have already said, um, there are inequities between schools across the board, whether it be academics. Athletics, clubs, classes offered, um college preparedness offerings. Um, it is very unbalanced throughout the district. I would like to see the district use their resources to create um a more balanced approach. Uh, to dive in and see what might be needed at one school over the other, but yet still offer. What the kids would need in order to be prepared, not only for college, but I would like to see um non-academic trajectories for the students as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question. In regards to the budget process. What programs or expenses do you believe should be prioritized? And what of those programs and expenses should be considered for reduction or elimination? And we will start with Timothy McGowan. And we will wait for you to unmute.
Sorry, I, I lost my camera here. Could you please repeat the question for me? I'm sorry, I logged out.
In regards to budget considerations. What programs and expenses should be prioritized? And what programs and expenses should be considered for reduction or elimination?
Perfect. Thank you so much. Uh, thanks to the board. We are currently secure in our financial situation. Um, I would not consider cutting programs that disproportionately impact students of color and students from low-income backgrounds. Uh, as an example, the district has discontinued its driver's ed services while many students can afford to go private lessons. Low-income students no longer have access to lower-rate driver's ed programs through our schools. Uh, students from lower-income families are the ones who take up the, up the part-time jobs in our community as to support their families. But without the driver's license, that option is no longer available. So these are the kind of impacts we need to consider when making budget cuts.
Thank you. Anna Klinkowitz.
Thank you. In regards to, to the budget, it's always a good thing to review our expenses. We did that a number of years ago before doing the referendum. We were able to save about five million dollars. So it's always prudent to, to take a look at the, at the expenses that do not affect the students directly. Cause those are important. We want to provide curriculum, classes, uh proper offerings for the kids, things that help them. So that I would like to continue to do. Um, we need to take a look at the curriculum, see what maybe needs to be enhanced. Things change. Probably also taking a look at our, you know, facilities, the technology, improvements to the classrooms. Things of that nature, things that are possibly uh a one-time, non-renewable uh activities. So I, I do support taking a look at our expenses and I've always said that we need to be able to do that. Thank you.
And Amy Nelson.
So this is a, a pretty loaded question. I, I, I'm going to be honest. I don't, I don't think I can really answer it. Um, I, I think in, in general, um, there needs to be conversations regularly, which I, I'm, I'm going to assume that the board does. Um, but conversations with administration um and discussing what can be reviewed. I, I think that there are always opportunities to find cuts in, in spending without having a direct impact on any programs. Or any students. Um, it's the same thing that we do in our own homes. If I, you know, can't, um, if I'm struggling financially, I'm gonna. Remove the movie channels from my cable package, right? There are all these kinds of things that we can do. Um, and, and I believe that um we can do that together.
Curtis Bradley.
All right, I think um. We need to continue to support the work of our teachers, librarians, and teacher assistants. And we also need to support the staff of the work that has been done to continue to do. And ensure the students that are not missing out on anything as a result of the pandemic. I also feel that we need to continue to support the work of our counselors because we're gonna need them more so than ever. We're gonna need to um continue to support the psychiatrists, uh the nursing staff. Um, because they're gonna help our students as well as the teachers get through this pandemic and not just the students and the teachers. But allow that resource to be available to any families that will need them. Um, and then I think if there's anything to cut back, I would say we could look at um cutting back on some of the third parties. Um, providers um that we're using to uh offer services to the school district. Uh, and that's where I think we stand right now.
Thank you. Jessica Hinkle.
Yeah, when we're talking about uh budget considerations, I'm kind of on the same boat with Amy. I would probably need a full hour to discuss this. Um, entirely, but um with regards to prioritizing or deprioritizing, obviously the prioritization should be on any, on any programs. And expenses that are directly, directly related to the students and teachers um day-to-day lives. Um, but when you're talking about budget, the, the topic of tax levies has, has to come up. And the boards uh in the past response to uh this discussion has to been to be impulsively, to impulsively vote. In favor of increasing the tax levy. A more thorough investigation of proposed levies, uh levy increases needs to be. Um, needs to be our goal and we should be scrutinizing uh the things that are not priorities. Versus the things that are our, our priorities and review the funding that's established for all these uh, all these uh programs and expenses. Thanks.
Robbie Volker.
I would say especially coming off a, a year that we've come off of, uh academics uh have to be a, a priority. And also mental health issues for the students. Um, I think we need to review and evaluate all of the programs. Uh, and see where we stand and making academics and mental health the priority. And if there needs to be some cutbacks in other programs to do that, then, then so be it. But I think we really need to uh make the academics um and, and the mental health of the students. Um, the, the priority with the budget. And since we're operating with a surplus of over thirty million dollars. Um, I think we probably won't even have to make any cutbacks in other programs to, to make that happen. Thank you.
Kristin Steele.
I would not suggest any cuts to any of our programs or facilities off the bat. Um, but we do need to consider how we spend the money that we do have. And I would say one way to also do that is take a look back over the years and see where, where we as a district could have done better in order to. Make better financial decisions. Um, we know our taxes are high and we know we may need more to support our student academics as well as their mental health needs as we come back off of the pandemic. But I do think that we have the money and are fiscally stable in order to be able to offer those programs without cutting anything. But always having safety and our students' well-being in academics as the top priority.
Denise Wilson.
Um, I, I don't disagree with a lot of what was said. I also agree that we should uh focus on our academics. The biggest challenge in the long-term effects of the students being out of school and e-learning. Um, it, it, it needs to be assessed and the mental health issues are greater in, in children that are over the age of eleven. Uh, the board will need to look at assessing to identify learning gaps and uh we need to just um to devise a strategic plan to respond to those. Um, we can't just assume that the children will come back in with the same level or increased level of knowledge. Um, we need to do some grade level um review and curriculum. Thank you.
The next question. Uh, District two eleven has had to make changes to policies regarding transgender students. What is your opinion of those policy changes? And how should the district support transgender students? We'll start with Anna Klinkowitz.
Thank you. We have faced this issue for the last several years. Um, the board has tried to do what is in the best interest of all of our students. It divided the community in some aspects. Um, but we always put the students first. I can speak for myself. That was my main concern is the students. Uh, we did come to, to an agreement and we were able to. Um, allow for guidelines to allow students the use of the uh, the locker rooms. That was the main concern. We were able to establish policy and proceed procedures in our own words without having the courts involved. Or having some outside organizations. Um, we. We do look at the needs of the student and what they're facing, and there is a policy and a procedure that is in place that structures the process and tries to meet the needs of all of our students.
Thank you. Amy Nelson.
Yes, thank you. So I I am in support of transgender students having full access to the locker room of their choice. As long as locker rooms have privacy stalls and enough of them for all all students if interested. For many students, there are some that do not feel comfortable seeing others change. There are some that don't want others to see them change, whether they are cisgender, transgender, straight. Privacy stalls are not exclusionary. In fact, I I view it as being quite the opposite. I see it as an opportunity for all students to change wherever they feel they are most comfortable. I I don't believe that some of the things that have have taken place that it truly is in the interest of all students. But i- in general, you allow everyone to change where they want to, and now I think we've given everyone the opportunity.
Thank you. Curtis Bradley.
Hello. So I feel that the district has put together the foundation of a policy. And what I mean by that, it's it is that it's a blanket foundation. And I think there's always going to be room to improve on that foundation. And that will happen under the equity umbrella, because we are continuing to assist these struggling students. And I believe that the district must evaluate these students under the equity policy. We must continue again to focus on the whole student to ensure that everybody and every student are being considered and for their best interest and for their safeguard. I think so often we talk about this issue, but we don't talk about the safety of the students first. And we want to make sure that every student and every transgender student or anyone that identifies other than their born sex feels safe while at school. And I think policies need to be in place again to ensure their safety.
Thank you. Jessica Hinkle.
Hi, I can I can say I could probably agree with a lot of what has been said already. The the most important thing, though, is that the board is responsible for looking out for the best interest and safety of all of the students. No particular group is should be excluded, and no particular group should set the set the stage for all the others. I think that we need to make sure that all students are being considered when we make policy changes. I think the the addition of the third room gave that gave that option so that people had place a place to go to feel comfortable in changing. But overall, I just think that when we're making sweeping policy changes, that we have to look at the best interest of all the students that are involved. Thank you.
Robbie Volkermer.
I believe in science, and I feel that a biological male and a biological female should utilize their corresponding bathroom or locker room. I felt that the the previous accommodations that District 211 allotted for by allow by accommodating transgender students with their own privacy stall was a suitable compromise. I feel that this issue is overlooking and a very important point, and that is, last I checked, the transgender population is approximately 0.06% of the general population. So I'm not saying to ignore or eliminate or exclude, but you have to keep that number in mind as well. And you have to also keep in mind the majority of students and your majority of your population that you are serving as well in addition to that. Thank you.
Kristin Steele.
Well, I do think all students should be considered. I echo what Robbie just said, so I'm not going to use my time to repeat it. It's very hard also to make sweeping policies for a less than 1% of the population. So there are many things that need to be considered and that have been considered. And as a board member, I will work within the system to keep the district compliant with the current laws while working to ensure that the intent of Title IX is also maintained. Female athletes, they need to become competitive in in an environment that is not dominated by male athletes. And we just need to make sure that everything is considered before making a sweeping policy for a very small percent. Thank you.
Denise Wilson.
Yes, I believe a lot of what has already been said. I know that there's policy out there. I guess I would, as a board member, want to know what part of that policy is not addressing the needs of our 211 children and identify what can be done to do to change that. I think a lot of it has to do with attitudes and behaviors. Maybe it's bullying that goes on so that we need to better understand what would be the issues that our policy is not currently addressing. Thank you.
Timothy McGowan.
Perfect, thank you. I'm I'm disappointed at some of the some of the students disappointed in some of the answers I'm hearing here. They may come off as somebody's some of answers may come off as transphobic. It's saddening that we'll feel that these candidates don't care or value their identities. For me, equity is one of the three pillars of my platform. I'm I'm an ally to the transgender community, and I support ways to be inclusive to this community and students who identify as transgender. I believe they should have locker room access, and we should also make sure policies that protect our transgender students from bullying and and harassment. Regarding the lawsuit, the district, the district's number one priority should have been to settle to accommodate all the students of the district, and it shouldn't have taken four years to come to this type of conclusion. So, excuse me. And so they spent a lot of time mismanaging resources, spent a lot of money to fight, when in reality, they should just went on ahead first and and went out set policies to accommodate all the students. And as a side note, this is not a transgender policy. This is an anti discrimination policy that includes transgender students. So by nature, it is very fair.
Thank you. Next question. How do you believe school, the school district, should balance safety and security measures and the use of school resource officers? And that will go to Amy Nelson as the first to answer.
I've been dreading having to go first because this whole experience is very stressful. One minute is not very long. It is hard to get out and answer. What I'm going to say is I think that that there is an opportunity for continued use of school resource officers. I think, you know, my experience of seeing my 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 own children through Palata and High School, which, you know, there were real close relationships with our SROs, and I I don't I don't see any need. I am not saying that everything's perfect and that that's necessarily always going to be the the best way to do things. But I don't think it should be an automatic change where we don't consider that to be an important part of what is happening within our schools to keep them safe. So sorry for rambling. Being first is scary. I'm done. Thank you.
Curtis Bradley.
Thank you for the question. I think the school should should continue to have the resource officers around. However, I think they should make them less threatening to the student body as a whole. And I think they can do that by making sure that they have the proper training in place, whether it's diversity training or whether it's how to handle a student that has a mental health disorder. And they also should be trained to ask for help from a teacher versus making decisions on their own. And I think if also, I I think if they could do this in a safeguarding way and and involve the students in that program as well, it would make it a lot more safe environment and a lot more less threatening for the student body. Thank you.
Jessica Hinkle.
I am in favor of maintaining the student resource officers that we have on our on our campuses. I think they are very value value added. I think as as administration, though, I think we could do a little bit more to make sure that there's there's a more comfortable medium between our student resource officers and our students. I think they should be. I asked my son the other day about being in school, and if he knew who the student resource officer was, and he didn't. I think that they should be they should be just as well known as any teacher. And I think that by being as well known as any other teacher and being able to interact with the students on a regular basis, their threat is not as threatening. But I agree, I think, just in any job, I think that continuous training is is a requirement. But I I agree with continuous continuous training for our teachers and staff and anybody that's in our schools. Thank you.
Robbie Volkermer.
About a year ago, I spoke with one of the SROs at Schaumburg High School about this issue, and I asked them their thoughts. As a retired police officer, he expressed that their number one priority was to keep students and staff safe at stay safe, pardon me, at the school, and they were on the front line. However, he felt his offer of protection was limiting since he was unable to conceal and carry at the school. He felt that this was one of the best lines of defense at the school and offered the best protection for students and staff. So I I do believe that the SROs are an important element, and we need to open up dialogue. And I think Jessica mentioned that as well, and with them to find out their concerns and what they feel is the best way to protect the students and staff at the high schools.
Kristin Steele.
I'm going to ask that you repeat the question, please.
How do you believe schools or the school district should balance safety and security measures and the use of the school resource officers?
Thank you. School resource officers should be seen as the students' allies. Perhaps there needs to be a program in place at each school so that the students know who they are, they're able to quickly identify them, be able to find them. My experience as a parent, I am glad they are on site. I want them there. I would. And they are involved with peer jury. And so from a personal standpoint, my daughter does sit on peer jury, so she does have a relationship and has had, you know, relationships with the SROs at the school, which I do find very valuable. She's learned from them. She knows who they are, and she's able to go to them, and and she advocates for them and tells other students about them. So they have an important presence on campus and at every school. Thank you.
Denise Wilson.
Yes, I I think the resource officers have a a very important role at at the schools. They're not just police officers. They've had additional training to have that position at school so that they're they can interact with the youth of 211 and other schools. There's many states, I believe there's over 40 states that have resource officers at their school. And if anything, there probably needs to be more than just one. They handle so many different things that that go on with the student population and besides just protection. And I think it's a very important role.
Timothy McGowan.
Perfect, thank you. I I think we need to reevaluate the role of school resources officers and ensure that the extent to which they are needed within these schools. The numbers speak for themselves. I said it before, I'll say it again. Black students only make up 6% of District 211's population, but are receiving 24% of suspension and 38% of the of the related arrests. Latino students only make up, excuse me, Latino students make up about 38% of the school, excuse me. Latin students make up about 25% of the population, but receive 39% of suspension and 35% of related arrests. This is not to say school resources officers are discriminatory, but there's a real problem here that needs to be addressed. Most of the problems that SROs are called for are better suited for mental health professionals or counselors, not necessarily SROs. So having an unnecessary interaction with an armed officer can be quite intimidating for students, and it can make them feel unsafe.
Thank you. Anna Klimkowitz.
I support our school resource officers. I think they add to the environment, to the culture of the school. The resource officers come to us trained. We have an an agreement, intergovernmental agreement with the the local police department. So most of the police officers that do come to the school, they do have some youth and juvenile background. We also have some retired police officers that are hired as hall monitors. The school resource officer does take time to talk to the kids. They do go to speak at different classrooms, maybe the health classroom, some other classes, depending on the the request of the teachers. They also do some community speaking and are able to provide information to parents and to the staff in regards to any kind of laws, legal actions, things of that nature. So the community service officers are a resource to the school.
Thank you. Next question. How do you believe the current curriculum is preparing students for both college readiness and direct entry into the workforce after graduation, depending upon the path that the student should choose? And we'll start with Curtis Bradley.
Hello. Thanks again for the question. I'm just researching the curriculum and being a recent graduate myself. I'm sorry, not recent. It's been decades ago. I think the curriculum does a great job in preparing the students for their post education and going into college. They offer a variety of AP classes at the student level, and I think they do a good job of offering the students' resources if students decide not to go to college. I think there's where the room of improvement lies. A lot of kids choose not to go to college and would like to go into the workforce like I did. Or I started in banking in 97, and I've been doing financing since 1997. So I know for a fact that when I was there, there wasn't enough resources for me. So I would like to investigate and make sure there are resources for the ones that do need to work to provide for their families since the pandemic. And then also the ones that just choose to go out on their own and work.
Thank you. Jessica Hinkle.
Yeah, so in I think one of the other candidates said earlier in their opening response or opening statements that our school rankings are not where they should be. And I I know that we it looks like about 50% of our students are college ready based off of the study. So if only 50% of our college or students are college ready, I think that we're not doing enough. We're not giving them enough. We're not. We're not providing them the tools they need to be to be more ready. I also think that we have had quite a focus on college bound and college readiness. But I think we have kind of gone taken away from the vocational and the trades arenas. And I think that we need to put a little more focus on those for the students that are not planning to go to college and make sure that our our teachers are set up with the tools they need to help guide our students that are not going to college into careers that best suit their their abilities. Thanks.
Robbie Volkermer.
I concur with a lot of what has already been said, but I think it was Denise who previously mentioned about the numbers being quite low for college readiness in District 211. And there definitely seems to be a lot of room for improvement with that. We seem to be teaching towards a test, especially in the AP classes. The students and the curriculum is more focused, I'm sorry, the teachers and the curriculum is more focused on getting the students through that AP test rather than to really learn the material. I also think we need to employ more skill sets to help prepare kids that aren't going to take the pathway to going on to college after high school and and that want to go through the pathway to like the trades or the vocational skills schools. So we need to focus on that as well at the high school level and giving them that opportunity to do that pathway as well.
Kristin Steele.
As a parent of a high school age student that's going through this right now, I view it as my job, our job, to make sure that she's college ready. Having said that, we do take part in the resources. we do take part in the resources that the district offers, but I do think that the administration and the district can do a better job in communicating those resources. Additionally, resources for students who do not have advocates for them, I think is very important. And lastly, and I've mentioned it before, as well as some of my um candidates here, non-academic trajectories, whether it be job fairs, um having the unions, different trade unions and and skilled trade come into the schools to talk about what that uh career trajectory and uh training looks like for those students. Thank you.
Denise Wilson.
Uh, yes, I did touch on that earlier because it is a a big concern to me that our um two eleven schools have such a low college readiness and um and we don't even have a hundred percent uh graduation from just the highest school with ninety-eight percent graduation rate. And and keep in mind, these are from twenty nineteen information and fifty-seven point two college readiness with uh two thousand five hundred and ninety-four students enrolled. And it goes all the way down to Palatine with ninety-two percent graduation and thirty-seven point eight percent college-ready. So I think there's uh lots of room for um improvement and um and focusing more on science and technology, engineering, mathematics, and bringing in more opportunity for children to learn about vocational schools because that is an option and should be considered. So, thank you.
Timothy McGowan.
Perfect, thank you. Um, based on what I've, what I've been hearing from students and teachers, the current curriculum is doing a good job preparing students for post-high school. Uh, there are some gaps, though, that I'd like to fill. Um, I want to make sure that more career and technical education uh courses are available so that students can receive guidance on their post uh post-high school and after their graduation plans. Um, Palatine High School recently incorporated AP preparation class for students taking their first AP classes. Uh, this dramatically increased the representation of students from minority backgrounds in AP classes, making programs like these more available. Uh, we'll make, make sure our students are better prepared for college and for these classes. Uh, our curriculum can also improve on diversity. We do offer women's studies and multicultural perspectives, but they are one semester classes that the vast majority of students just just do not take. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Klinkowitz.
Thank you. We generally big begin with um the career explanation exploration for our students when they enter the freshman. And each year, we're expanding on that and giving kids more opportunities. Um, we do look for summer internships for our students and that allows them to maybe explore in accounting or human resources, shadowing someone at some of the different um organizations and companies that are in the area. We have reached out to many different organizations, banks, uh manufacturing, all of those different places to see how we can uh how they can help us educate our students in regards to the different careers. Um, we also have offered job fairs for students where kids have been really successful in finding careers or getting a job. Um, we work to try to get our children to just take a look at, you know, colleges and for them, what type of career, what's available for them, and how can you get to that opportunity? Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Nelson.
Thanks. Um, so I I think the district does a great job preparing students for college. There's such a a push on um AP classes, a push on um SAT and all of that. Um, but but you know, let's face it, things have changed. Um, many are not able to afford college and frankly, there some are just not interested. Um, I personally, I do not have a college degree, but I am lucky to have kind of accidentally found an amazing career that doesn't require one. Um, as a district, we can expand our mentorship programs and improve the way that we introduce our students to other opportunities outside of college.
Thank you. I believe in the interest of time. We're going to move on. Just give me one second, I'm checking our timing. I think we're gonna move on to our closing statements. We're gonna move on to our closing statements. Um, and so we will be starting, um and each candidate has uh one minute. Um, and we will be starting with Jessica Hinkle.
Great, thank you. And uh thanks again for this opportunity to the League of Women Voters. I know it takes a lot of work putting putting these types of things together, so I thank you all for your efforts in doing so. Um, like I said before, I'm seeking uh to serve our community because I, while I do believe District Two Eleven has the uh is one of the best districts in Illinois, I think that we need to do even more. I think um, there there's a lot of opportunity and um some new faces on the board, some getting more parents involved um to to advocate for the students, I think is is very important. Um, so um as a a parent of a student at Schaumburg and one going into Schaumburg, I think um I I can serve the community well in doing in doing this. Um, again, I look forward to serving our community and if you'd like to learn more about me, you can check out my website, um Jess Hinkle dot com or my Facebook page. Thanks.
Robbie Volker.
I'm running for the Board of Education to try to bring back a focus on academics and to reduce costs wherever possible. I have served as an advocate for students and families for years, and those in the community who have worked with me know this. The Board of Education position would allow me to continue what I have been doing all along. Some of my uh, some of my accomplishments are, I'm a strong advocate for academics and persuaded Schaumburg High School to update their academic scholar wall after seven years of neglect. I persuaded Schaumburg High School to offer a field trip for orchestra and choir students when only a band field trip existed. I persuaded Schaumburg High School to get a certified teacher to offer AP World History after noticing this course was offered at other D two eleven schools. There is still work that needs to be done, however, and I am hoping I am able to continue to advocate for students and families at the next level. Please check out my Facebook page at Robbie V D two eleven Board of Education Candidate to learn more. I thank you for the opportunity today to share my thoughts with you. Thank you.
Kristin Steele.
As we all know, the board plays a critical role in determining the policies that will improve the education for our children. I recognize we are fortunate to live in a community where education is paramount, but each year we face tough decisions on how to allocate the district resources and this year is no different. If elected as a member of the D two eleven Board of Education, I will ask in-depth questions about policy and programs so that we as a community understand the value they will bring to the entire district. I will make certain that the needs of our students are met through academics and be equitable for all. I will listen and reflect the concerns of our community and work collaboratively with fellow board members to improve our school while remaining fiscally responsible. If a board is in place that is strategic in its thinking without being myopic and shortsighted, I believe together we can find creative solutions to address these challenges while maintaining the superior quality of education we have come to expect. We are stronger together. I invite you to see my um Facebook page at Steele at D two eleven B O E. Thank you for your time today. Have a great day.
Denise Wilson.
Uh, yes, um, as a board member, I will work to provide better education, cut wasteful spending and work to improve student, teacher, and parent relationships. Um, also in closing, I'd like to say America's greatest moments happen when individuals have the courage to step up and challenge group think status quo to solve problems. And I ask you, what are we wanting for District Two Eleven students? To be told what to think or to learn how to think and problem solve for themselves. And thank you all for your time and the work putting this together.
Timothy McGowan.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, first off, I just want to thank the Women League of Voters for hosting this forum. Uh, it is really important to me that people understand the work that that I want to do as a D two eleven board member. Uh, to close, I want to reinstate my three central goals. Uh, the first one is accountability. The district should be transparent in decisions they make. We should engage all stakeholders and continue to hold them to excellent standards. The second one is community. My entire campaign has been focused to on listening to our community. Our campaign has been criticized for taking donations. Uh, but every dollar has been from community members who believe in my vision and believe in the purpose of of what we're doing. Uh, and every dollar goes back to making sure that we get our vote out, that we reach communities, districts, we reach the families in all the districts that have historically not been heard. And third is equity. I will work my board with my board members to develop a solid plan to ensure pro uh proactive addresses issues, races, racial, gender, income, and disability equity in our schools. If my platform resonates with you, come join my campaign. Our team has knocked on thousands of doors and so far, we hope to knock on thousands more before election day. Thank you.
Anna Klinkowitz.
Thank you. My ability to listen and ask questions, which stems from my background and community involvement, I believe adds balance to the board. I also believe that we need to stabilize our educational process as we recover from the pandemic. We'll need to look at the new normal as we provide academic and emotional support for students and all of our staff. I believe that the next couple of years, we need to look at our strategic plan. We need to look at the uh strategic areas we had previously identified. Life readiness, professional responsiveness, community partnerships, and organization organizational effectiveness. We'll lay the blueprint as we go forward. So this is truly vital and I'd like to remain being part of that. Uh, my website is voteforannatwoeleven.com. Please visit it and if you have any questions, I'm very willing to answer them. Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. Thank you.
Amy Nelson.
Thanks. So uh every, every person here is interested in making a difference in our community. We all have something or someone that pushed us from just considering entering the race to actually committing our own time and money and frankly, a small chunk of our personal life privacy. Um, in my line of business, we talk about relationships, partnerships, um being vital to our mutual success. Maintaining and nurturing great relationships between the board, the administration, the students, the staff, and the community are vital to our district's health. So let's be real, there are nine of us running for only three seats. What do I want people to take away from the past ninety minutes so that they consider voting for me? I hope that it comes across over Zoom, but I am an open book. I will always be honest with my answers, no matter who is asking me the question. And while we may not always be in agreement on something, I am a firm believer in compromise. We will work through it and make forward progress. Thank you.
Curtis Bradley.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters. I also would like to thank the Deltas for hosting this event. I would also like to thank all the candidates that's been on this panel with us. It's been a pleasure getting to know each of you guys a little bit better and uh obviously, there are three spots open. Good luck to everyone. Um, so my five goals once again is fairness. Every student gets a fair opportunity to succeed after high school. Inspiration, all students are capable of learning when motivated and inspired. Guidance, parents, staff, and students are supported to the fullest. The primary attention will be the students. High school, to create a positive memory that will last a lifetime for students as well as their educators. Togetherness, working as a learning community where everyone will have a voice and action will be taken will be necessary. Again, I provide a unique perspective with over twenty-five years in the banking industry. Thank you.
As we bring this forum session to a close, I want to thank the candidates for their participation. We would like to encourage all of our candidates to recycle their campaign signs. Uh, members of the public can do so as well and you can contact the League of Women Voters Palatine area website for details. If you are not a registered voter, you can find registration information on the League of Women Voters website. When you exit the forum, you should see a prompt for a brief one-minute survey. Please fill it out so that we continue, can continue to bring you quality programs. On behalf of the Schaumburg Hoffman Estates Alumni Chapter of Deltas and the Theta Sorority Incorporated and the League of Women Voters, thank you all for coming. And don't forget, early voting begins on March twenty-second and Election Day is April sixth. There's plenty of election information available on the League of Women Voters website. Please participate in our democracy by casting your ballot. Your vote is your voice. Thank you.